... United States of America, through your color for justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to start off by congratulating our holiday winners while you're here. Might as well start with you. Our first place prize goes to Danison Bellrose right across the street. In case you didn't see their house, they received overall best presentation for day and night display. Nice, simple Christmas showing that looks perfect no matter when you go by. So they received first place. And second place is for Dennis and April Slutter. Come on, come on up. This is for the best evening display of lights. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did a nice job. And third place we have to John and Jessica Kaufman. They live up on Oak Street, and they had the best daytime display. And thank you to everyone who participated. It was fun as usual to go around and look and see all the creative things that folks had done with their homes. It's always fun to do.
Did you notice there were the only ones decorated though on our street?
On your street it was, yeah. There were a few streets that were pretty sad this year, but for the most part, you know, it was a good display. Then we had some very bright streets that Nisa really liked and enjoyed the electric bell whirring away. They should go back to giving their $50 gift certificates to help defer the cost of running the lights, right? So that was nice when they did that. But thank you guys for participating. It was really nice. Okay, we'll call members. Should've done that first. Apologize.
Mayor Moore is at Sutner. We have Amy here who's the acting mayor.
Here.
Trustee Barton.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
Trustee Tremblay.
Here.
All right. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion actually I should set first? Okay. Thank you. All right. Mike, Tatro.
Yes, I have a few things tonight. You did get a copy of the letter of the inspection that was done in the building downtown from the engineer as requested. I'm going through it.
Quite different.
Yeah, it's quite different than what we had. It is what it is, but anyway, I'm going through it. It's a level three alteration repair, which is a pretty significant amount of work has to be done. He's still going to have to supply us with a set of plans as to what he's going to do in there. There's some questions I need to get answered, but I'll be contacting him, and more likely he'll come in, we'll discuss it, and see where we're going to go from there. Other than that, there was another issue in the village I resolved as far as property maintenance, been working with a person. There's still a few out there, and I'm slowly working on them. I did get up to a new business that's in the village, elegance coatings, this past week, and I was talking with the general manager there, and they've got 20 to 23 people employed already. And the buses are coming in and they're rolling out, so I don't know. I was quite impressed with the operation and the amount of work that's being done there. So other than that, that's all I have for right now.
What are we looking for a timeframe for that downtown place?
Downtown? Well, this coming week, the rest of this week, and probably next week, I'll have sent him a letter, and then I'll have to wait and hear from him, see what he wants to do with it.
He said in his letter that he'd begin once the weather changed. Well, we know that's not happening until April, so in the meantime, are we requiring him to get the plan together? What is he going to be doing?
Exactly. That's my convention. Now, he may have another thought on this, or his engineers may have something else. We may have to get the village engineer involved in some of this, but I just want to see where he wants to go with it.
Any questions for Mike?
Kind of covers what I was thinking about myself.
And welcome, Harry. I'm sure you have some things to share with us. Lots happening.
So, I just, the first thing, we had a really good meeting, Larry, the mayor, myself, and the sheriff, and over at Ross's Point. I didn't know, were there results from that that you guys were able to follow? This was the Homeland Security meeting, trying to secure some funding.
I got a copy of the map and stuff when I delivered it myself down to the sheriff's department, so I haven't heard back from him.
Okay. Are we looking for a video system protection or a fence?
I think that's what we were looking for.
The video system, okay. All right. But, you know, let me know on that. I think, it sounds like the funding is already here for that, so that was a, that was a good thing.
The water tank, water plant.
I could probably look at some fencing around that, too.
Yeah. Around, around.
Just around the tank.
I think that was part of it, yeah. Yeah.
When did you get him the map? Because I talked to him this afternoon, he was waiting on something from you.
That was, that was that same week.
Couple of weeks ago. I took him when I took a water sample down, so it wasn't the same week.
Okay.
I got the copies on Wednesday.
All right, we should probably double check with them. He says the money's there and they're ready to start moving, so.
Well, I have to take water samples down, so I always talk to myself.
Okay, great. Yeah, take advantage of it. I mean, we supply the water for our border. It'd be great to take advantage of that.
The next thing, you probably saw in the news, but I'll just mention it because we're kind of proud of it, the fact we were able to lower the county tax rate from, we started on a 14.2 percent increase, we got it down to 0.8, first time we've been below $6,000 in the last 10 years. Champlain unfortunately dropped by a penny, but at least it went down, so that's better than some other areas. And as all of you know, this year is going to be impossible, and I'm sure it's going to be in the villages, too. We have changed airport service. We decided to go with Pogon Air. You may have seen that in the news. How that affects us here is that we now have a bigger plane, as are the first of March. And for those people who don't like to fly on an eight-passenger, no bathroom, no services, and you get to talk to the pilot all the way to Boston flight, and if you have children, that's a big deal. We're going with a 35 to 40-passenger, and they co-share with US Air and Continental. And so you should be able to book a flight out of Plattsburgh to anywhere in the country, and we're very pleased for that. We feel bad for Cape Air. They've been with us right from the beginning, but they're just, that's the best they could provide for.
Best, best change.
Shouldn't be much, but again, the prices are only guaranteed for a year, so the difference between, I think it was like $6, so it was not significant. But, again, they pick up this essential air service, we only get one, they pick up the million dollars from the federal government for this essential air service. And that's, bidding Plattsburgh is not the big deal, it's picking up that extra million that they get for doing this. And that's why Cape Air fought so hard to hang on to it. We will continue to get that for the next couple of years, but after that, it's going to be gone, so it's going to have to make it on its own. But the general comments, especially from Canadians, which is about 80% of the business, is that they would never fly on a passenger. I mean, they come up, you know, they want the bigger planes. And so if we're going to get them to go out of Plattsburgh, not, you know, not on, you know, any of the services we have to Myrtle Beach or Port Watermill, but if we're going to get them on the other flights, we're going to have to have a bigger plane. The Chamber's going to market that heavily in Montreal, so hopefully it'll, because they are going to have to ultimately pay for themselves down the road.
I just want to go on record and say my daughter's going to be very disappointed.
Because?
She enjoyed an eight-passenger flight.
Well, and you know, they paraded, you'll appreciate this, they paraded a number of people through at a meeting that really did. And all I can tell you is that the assumption by the marketing we've done, and in addition to that, they're non-pressurized cabins, so for anybody that has any kind of, you know, ear problems or anything else, I mean, it's fun. The people, the people that went on that flight said they really had a good time getting to know the pilot and so on, it was fantastic. Having said that, we just think that we'll probably, within the first year, probably increase the number of airplanes by a significant number. But we'll pass along your daughter's comment. Cape Air will appreciate that.
The views were tremendous.
I'm sure.
Did she get to sit up in the, in the radio and see?
Oh, she did, oh yeah, the pilots and everything, they said. That's right, they would have a co-pilot, they'd let somebody sit up there. But there are people that that's not their competition.
You're cozy.
It is cozy.
Very cozy.
But if you're flying, we, a couple of people called and said, you know, they were planning a trip with a family, and they had, you know, they had eight or nine of them, and they were flying to a destination, and they had to get two of their flights, they couldn't all get on the same plane, so. There's a lot of downsides to that, and, you know, unfortunately Cape Air does have a few bigger planes, but they're out in the Pacific Rim, and they won't bring them here. So they had an opportunity, because we like Cape Air, but we decided to go with a bigger plane.
And they donate, they donate the generous to the community.
Oh, they do, absolutely. And they listed all of the things that they have done for the community, and they have local representatives at each town who also came to the meeting. But it was, and it is the first six to four vote that I was able to participate in, and it was not an easy decision. But we were trying to look forward and say that this is where we saw the future, and we would be willing to go with Cape Air if they could give us a bigger plane, and they could not do it. So they maintain we'll be back again with Cape Air, so we'll see what happens. Okay, just on the budget process, I don't know whether you guys are feeling any of the effects as the state comes back on promises they made from now through March 31st. We're seeing it in probation, real property, social services, they're all, everything, monies that were already promised to us. And of course, our budget year runs for nine months of the state budget year, so for the county, it's going to be almost, I don't know what we're going to do. We're looking at billions of dollars in shortfall at the state level, which translates into millions for the county. So, and I assume that we're all going to be in the same boat, so anybody having more shared services ideas, or any ideas where monies can be saved, obviously we're looking for those. The, we did have a meeting the other day about computerization. I guess you guys are pleased with the computerization package that you received from the county. Is that accurate, or?
The tax program?
Yes.
Has worked well. I attended a meeting, and I don't believe they're staying with that company.
Well, they can't provide, Tunnel can't provide the county with what he promised, so we are not going to be able to provide some of the services. It doesn't affect too much the villages, although I do think that some of the, Ross's Point may yet change back, and the town has not changed yet. But just, I'm just trying to get a flavor for your feeling about the program that you're using now, is that?
We haven't had, it's been great the year that we've used it. We didn't have a program before.
Right.
So we don't have anything to go back to other than manuals, so.
And that's where the Tunnel program has been working the best, with areas that had not been, you know, on a computer program before.
Right.
Okay, the only other thing that I, I mean, I'm not going to go into the Pfizer thing, there's nothing really new, except that you probably saw it in the paper, they are going to at least hold a chem pilot for another six months in Ross's Point. So hopefully, they're going to work through what that means, through 2010, which basically means that they'll have a marketable building there for a full year instead of a half year. And, you know, for those of us that are concerned, because we know those assessments, they will not affect necessarily the village of Champlain, although it will affect people in the village because if it goes off the county, school, and town tax rules, then obviously that's going to be another disaster. So in addition to not having funding, we're going to be losing assessment in the township. But we'll see what happens. Gary Douglas, I found to be one of the most professional people I've ever seen in terms of marketing, and, you know, he pulled Acromax out of the hat, so we'll see what happens. It is a long shot, however, and he's made that quite clear, that in terms of getting someone else to be in there. I didn't know what your situation was. I think we may have talked about this the last time, in relation to health insurances provided. Are you guys using Burnham Financial, Ollie Plastic for your?
We do, but the only one that has insurance through Burnham is me. The other ones have Teamsters.
Okay, okay.
Because they're union.
Yeah. Did you, because we saved $400,000 in that year when we changed over, and I didn't know whether it was anything to look at down the road, even though they're unionized. If, I guess if you want more information on that, you know, we have 860 employees, so obviously you're not going to, but it's something to look at if, in fact, they would consider it.
Do you go through Burnham?
Yes. A lot of the county employees opted for the new plan, which did save us a significant amount.
What insurance is that?
Pardon me?
What insurance is that?
It's one of the Blues, but it is a special hybrid that has, I mean, there are pluses and minuses to it. If you're interested, I can get you the two plans you can take a look at.
See, the only problem is here with Burnham is that you need to have, if you're going to have some kind of plan of insurance, you need to have so many employees, which is a minimum of, I think they just dropped it to like three.
Yeah.
And the plan that I'm in is an empire plan, it's an HMO, but it doesn't have any requirements, so we have only one person, which they allow.
Let me, let me see if I can get to some information, we'll see. How many other employees are covered in the village?
All the guys have the insurance, and they're, and they're, and it's four guys.
All right.
They have Teamsters.
The total of five?
Yeah.
All right. The last thing, you probably saw this, elected officials who are in the retirement system have to now, you did see that, okay. I don't know whether it's anybody elected or appointed officials, okay. So you're aware?
Just Kim.
Okay. You're aware that you have to keep a log and so on. This came up at the Moores meeting, so I did some research on it.
Remember we talked about that, we didn't have work.
Over the next six-month period, you're going to have to log your hours.
I thought that they, when you checked on it, we didn't need to do anything.
Well, when were you elected?
Oh, this is my second term.
Okay, but when, so it's when you start your next term, if you decide, is this the beginning? Are you up this year?
No.
Okay, so it's next year.
I'm in the middle, next year.
Next year for three months. They're requiring of all officials, if they're in the retirement system.
Does it have, you don't do it in the middle of the term? It has to be at the beginning of the term?
Yes, it has to be in the beginning.
And I thought it was three months.
It is. It's over a six-month period, it's any three consecutive months.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, and there's only one in Moores, and then maybe a couple in Champlain, not, you know, I never did it, and, you know, I had no idea when I first ran for trustee that I was actually going to be in politics for a while, so I didn't even consider. But once you say no, I guess you're out. I mean, that's it. But there are a number of legislators, and of course, it can be, you know, like district attorney, you know, clerk, and any of the people, elected or appointed officials.
I know when I went to a meeting with Postim, and they mentioned it about keeping, that's when I came back, I mentioned it to Anita, and one lady said that there was one of their employees that the retirement system took back like 20 years of service, that he had, thought he had an retirement system, that was just, you know, not putting in time correctly.
Well, the concern on the part of, it's interesting, and the part of Moores, they were concerned that if they showed a pattern of attendance and then they missed a meeting, that they'd get docked money, you know, and that of course is not the intention of this, but that was a concern. Once you show a pattern, then somebody has to be excused, for example, you know, would they end up docked, and then of course, that's not the case. Okay, very good. Well, again, you know, I don't know whether, I've been coming every other month, and I don't know whether, I ask each board if you feel that's enough during a year's time. I certainly could make an effort to get here every month if you thought it was necessary, but if I don't hear anything, I'll assume that that's fine, and, you know, if any issues come up at all, I am more than happy to set something, I set something up with Arsene last week with Joe Drew on that computerization, and I'd be very happy to assist and also to attend a meeting with you if that would happen, so just let me know. Okay, thanks.
All right. No report from Mayor Moore, so I guess I'll give my report, which was already done, by announcing the winners of the decorating contest.
I'm going to go first, Mr. Martin.
I know, I know. Tree pickup will be this Wednesday. Please have your trees out by 7:00 a.m., because if you're the first house on the route and your tree's not out, and you put it out midday, it's going to sit there until spring cleanup. They won't pick it up, spring cleanup, you'll have to chop it up into pieces and put it into a little bag. So make sure you get it out there first thing in the morning, on your snowbank by the side of the road, and they will pick that up for you. The local high school's going to be having flu shots, so if you haven't gotten the information on the H1N1 shot that will be available at Northeastern coming up, I believe it's on the 20th, so check your kids' knapsacks and look for that information, because it is being offered to all the kids out there. And that's all I have. Tim?
I have no report.
Mr. Martin?
I'd like to congratulate the holiday winners. They did a wonderful job. It's always nice to see, you know, the lakes and things, and the effort that you've made in the villages, it was very nice. Thank you. Thanks to the village crew, keeping the streets and sidewalks clear of snow, and thanks to the village residents in the same regard, well, by keeping their sidewalks clean. I have a note here with Christmas trees, it's already done. Reminder, the next shared services meeting will be January 20th, 5:00 p.m. at the village office. As always, the public is invited to attend these meetings, and they are going to, if you want to do this on your business, but I'll do it here. This is a reminder to our residents that we will be changing our meeting times for the month of February, March, April, and May of this year to the second Tuesday at 6:30. The second Tuesday of the month at 6:30 here in the village office. The village board meetings will be changed for those four months. Thank you.
Again, congratulations. I did expensive decorating for years, I don't know how much work it is, especially to take it all down, but nice job, I appreciate it, drive around the village and see that everybody's festive and spirits. Thank you. And Larry, you know, congratulations to the crew, the streets and sidewalks have been all taken care of, and it's very much appreciated.
Extra merit, too.
Oh, did you? I haven't been on that corner very long. Thank you very much. And that's, that's all I have. I have my report tonight.
Great, thank you. Report from the Cook Treasure.
Everybody, what happened with the expense revenue reports for December? We got a look at a water and sewer billing. Our water figure was $52,461.83, and sewer was $76,577.18.
One more time?
Sewer?
Yep.
$76,577.18.
Any questions for Anita? Okay, presentation of the warrant and payment?
We need to add one bill. It's a bill for Bob Jewell to come out of G8130.1, $197.
Second?
I make a motion to approve the transfer of the warrant. $197.
Motion by Tom. Second by Greg. All in favor? Any questions? Discussion?
Yeah, what should we do? You could approve the warrant with Bob Jewell.
Okay. But amend your motion?
I'll amend it. Right, that's what I meant. I approved the warrant with the addition of Bob Jewell's payment, $197.
Thank you. Didn't know what I'd do, send, including everything? Any questions? I had one question. What did we pay last year for liability insurance, our workman's comp? Do you know?
No.
It wasn't? God, it's ghastly.
It was. Because I had looked it up. It was $15,000. Yeah. There was like $600, $800 difference between last year and this year.
Is there something we can do to reduce that, huh? Eliminating employees?
Believe me, Amy, I've tried. I went through our payroll figures, re-added them, and sent them to, because it was 18. Pretty close to 18.
Was it?
Yeah. They had us for almost $300,000 for payroll.
Anita, we talked about it, she went through one, because there were some things that didn't look right.
Right.
So. And we dropped it down to $258,000 or something. It's still a little lower, but it's like $100 difference between what actual payroll was and what the payroll that we figured that I sent her, so we could redo it for the year.
Anybody have any other questions? All in favor? Do I go one by one on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Trustee Kim Tremblay.
Trustee Greg Martin. Aye.
Trustee Amy Gird.
Aye.
Trustee Tom Tremblay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Just got varied. Where do I go? I'll sit here, I just had it. Thank you, sorry. All right. Report from the superintendent. Harry?
Well, I just all got a copy of my work report. Just catching up on a bunch of other things, and we got the 89 trucks started up and running, we delivered that today. It's gone. Working on getting around a couple of other things. We did have a water main break up in Metal Lane that was all taken care of. Keeping the streets clean, keep it going.
What's that?
A John Yarz from Pyleamont.
Problems with the grease traps in the?
What's that?
Any problems with the grease traps in the logs and so?
January 4th, you were back out?
The January, no, I didn't go. There's a couple places up in the town that, the mobile station, Sunoco Station, that Mickey said they, theirs wasn't in yet, so I figured I'd give them a chance to get them in, go around, hit everybody again, and see what's happening on that.
The new maple fields?
The new maple fields, they have their stuff all intact there.
And I saw you stopped St. Mary's, too?
Correct. Debbie's, what's that?
I don't think there is a grease trap.
No, and Debbie knows, and they're going to have to do something with it.
Triple times.
The high school has four outside grease traps.
You were meeting with the board or two? Anything further on that?
Nope.
No?
Haven't heard anything. We met Dave Fabro and Harry down there for the camera system and stuff, security and...
Okay. But nothing for the water main?
No. No. Christmas decorations all came down today. They'll put back upstairs tomorrow.
Yeah, we had a couple that were pretty shot.
Yes, we're going to go through them.
Okay.
We still have next year, well, this summer, hopefully we'll make some boxes, get some out of different holes.
Okay. All right, can you talk to Sheriff? Ice cream, what's happening with that?
The cleanup down there is with the water main break and getting that truck and stuff, just didn't have time to finish up.
We have February break, third week of February, it'd be nice if we have it by then, it'd be nice to have it sooner.
I'll see.
Well, the kids need something to do around here, we just don't have anything for them to do, and I really would like you to see if you can make that a priority.
Okay.
In vacation time, you might want to take a look at the staff's vacation time, we're down to six months, and some have quite a bit of hours, especially Woody. You can take a look at that.
Well, he's got carryover. Well, I've got his, got carryover.
So you might wanna just start looking at scheduling him in some vacations regularly here to cut that down.
He's been taking some days.
Okay. Try and get him a little bit more locked together, or, cause he's never gonna weed this away, we're just gonna keep carrying and carrying what we said we weren't gonna carry anymore, so.
No.
So we, you know, we don't want to lose that kinda hours. All right, any other questions for Larry?
Our new truck isn't, can, can put together, so hopefully another week.
It's been there for two weeks, right?
What's that?
It's been in there for two weeks.
Uh, it's been a week.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We're just gonna have to pick a date that we can swap the same year out on it.
Any other questions for Larry? Thank you for keeping up on the snow, it does make a huge difference, especially for the people that walk.
Makes a big difference, as I said.
We have so many people, yeah.
Yeah, makes a big difference.
Good.
Money will strike right there.
It's nice to have tech. Okay, correspondences?
Plaid to Greg Galili from Code Officer, take over regarding his property 1191 Route 9. Correspondence from O'Connell Arnowitz regarding votes of claim for Chad Corrier's apartment, Chad Corrier's property damaged 1141 Route 9. Invitations to holiday contest winners. Sewer credit request on behalf of Douglas Sterns and backup information from Deputy Kirk Barcom. Correspondent with Customs and Road Customs and Border Protection with executive leave. Agreement for repeater tower at water tank. Correspondence from Flint County Highway Department regarding 2010 highway utility work permit. Correspondence from Ronald Trombley regarding the engineering report. His property 1163, 1165 Route 9.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
If you wanted to under, under new business, I realize I didn't list it there, but the Douglas Sterns request needs to be actin' on.
Oh, yes, thank you. Put that in here. Okay, uh, old business, we touched on the GSA meter, absolutely no update. You have any plan of a meeting with these folks? You're gonna get together with Ian just for the holidays?
We got together, we'll, we won up and they haven't got back with us. The funds are there, but they only, they only can allocate it at certain times, so.
And what are those times?
Didn't say. They were gonna get back with us.
Well, ask them for some certain times and maybe we can get some more specifics out of them. But they're masters at pushing off, they are the United States government. Okay. Uh, new business, one thing we did not mention, I failed to mention, there are two trustee positions that are up for reelection. Anyone who is interested in running for a trustee position, you can pick up a petition from Donna or Juanita here in the village office. And you go around and you get signatures, a minimum is 50 signatures. I suggest you get a minimum of 17 in case there's duplicates, or people that say they're registered and they're not registered voters. So if you're interested in running, come on in and pick up a petition. And resolution for the polling place for elections?
Resolution, resolution polling place and time, 2010 elections Village of Champlain. Whereas the village, the next village election for officers of the Village of Champlain, New York will be held on March 16, 2010. Whereas the board trustees said village must designate by resolution polling place and hours, which polls shall be open for section 15-104-3B of the state of New York election law, then be it hereby resolved that board trustees of the Village of Champlain have determined the polling place shall be at the Village of Champlain office, 1104 Route 9, Champlain, New York, with polls being open from 12 noon to 9:00 PM. And be it resolved that as required by section 15-104-3B of the state election law, notice to said village polling place and time, the polls will be open, be given at least 60 days prior to that election date. The resolutions will take effect immediately. Following question, was Julie put to a roll call, which results as follows? Mayor Moore is excused. Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Garrett?
Aye.
And under new business, Douglas Sterns requested that we take a look at his folks' water bill. There was a running toilet, his dad was in the hospital and a nursing home, and they're looking for an adjustment on a large bill that they were not aware of. Does anybody have questions on that? That was number four, under correspondences.
This is the first you've asked Donna to have?
Well, I didn't see anything respond.
Okay, we're looking for a total of 83, what was it?
Eighty-four thirty-six.
Eighty-four thirty-six. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we give them a one-time credit of $84.36 on the bill.
Thank you. Kim, a second?
A second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Tom, Peter?
Aye.
All right, is there any further business to come before the board tonight?
Yes, we have just got a budget meeting.
Oh, yeah. I have to have it down here, it's skipped over there. You folks do not need to stay, we're going to schedule budget meetings now.
Yeah, he works nights, I'm looking at the clock, he's just gotta go to work, so.
Thank you for coming, thank you for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. If you'd like to come to our budget meetings, they're always fun and stimulating.
I'll have enough budget meetings at home. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. All right, are there any times that are?
Bye all.
Bye, thank you, Harry. Good ban for folks. How soon do we wanna start them?
Well, whatever you want. What do you think?
Okay, well?
February?
Yeah, sooner than that, honey.
That's a good try.
Well, I'm not here much.
Oh, you're not here much?
No, neither one of us.
That's why I said February.
Oh, okay. Do you have any, any time you're here at all, January?
Yeah.
This week, which we're not available.
Okay.
We leave on Saturday, we're gone till the 25th.
And I possibly have one day of that week.
Okay.
It's like a, so it's tough to do. We come back on a Monday, we have a, I got a meeting on Wednesday, and I've got 26 and 28, we're tentative.